Welcome to Lincoln City Council Meeting of the 18th of September 2017. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with LB 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of business of the City Council is as follows. The clerk will call items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, then those opposed. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating name, address, and whether you are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items under third reading. On the second and last meetings of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Will the clerk please read the first item?
Yes, we would request those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Due to the City of Lincoln Indigenous Peoples' Day, Columbus Day holiday, there will be no City Council meeting on Monday, October 9, 2017. However, city offices will be open. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items 1 through 11. If there are any appointees here, they may come forward at this time.
Dr. Miller here?
Hi, Councilmembers. Randall Jones, Director of Aging Partners for the City of Lincoln. Dr. Miller contacted me a few minutes ago, said she wasn't able to make it. Some of you may know Jaclyn Miller through her work on the Health Department Board, and I think she's a great addition to Aging Partners. She has a long history in working in mental health and the State Health Department as well, so.
Okay. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on these items? Next item, please.
All right, we can vote on these items. Items 1 through 4 were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Then items 8 and 9 were introduced by Gaylor Baird.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lyrian, seconded by Jane. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses. I'll call items 12 and 13 together. They are the application of 12th Street Pub for a Class CK liquor license at 100 North 12th Street and the related manager application. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name is Tuan Mai. I live on 2550 South View Circle. I just take over the 12th Street Pub. I would like to have alcohol license for my bar as I'm a manager.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Mai? Carl?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mai. Could you tell us about the business? Will you be changing anything that is currently there?
Everything's, I keep the same thing.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next are items 14 and 15. They're the application of Red Fox West Side Grill for a Class I liquor license at 1339 West O Street as well as the related manager application. Just raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
April Hinky. Address is 1339 West O Street.
Ms. Hinky, why don't you tell us about your application?
I am applying for my liquor license and my manager's license to take over the Red Fox as the owner.
Okay. Questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next then is item 16, application of Steve-O's Lounge to expand its Class C liquor license by the addition of an area measuring approximately 56 feet by 20 feet at 110 West Fletcher Avenue. Would you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you verily believe it to be? Thank you.
I'm Steve Overton, 1241 North 56th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm applying for an application to expand my Class C license by addition of an area of 56 by 20 at 110 West Fletcher Avenue.
Okay, other questions? Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
If not, we can act on these items if someone wishes to move approval.
Mr. Chairman, I would move the approval of items 12 through 16.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Lyrian. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Raybold.
Yes.
Schob.
Yes.
Christensen.
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, 6 to 0. Next then are public hearing resolutions, approving the Red Fox West Side Grill as a Keno satellite at 1339 West O Street.
Before you begin, let me just say anybody who is here for the liquor license application, you're no longer required to stay unless you really want to.
(laughing).
Go ahead.
Mr. President, members of the council, my name is Katrina Coffey. I'm Vice President of Marketing for Big Red Keno. We're located at 11248 John Galt Boulevard in Omaha, Nebraska. I have with me today April, the owner of the Red Fox, and we're here just for an ownership change. It currently has Keno right now. We just need to change the license to her name.
Okay, other questions? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next then is item 18, accepting the report of new impending claims against the city and approving disposition of claims set forth for the period of August 16 through the 31st, 2017. Is there anyone here for a claim?
My name's Timothy Hyatt. My address is 3800 Vermais Place, Suite 100, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68502. I'm here representing Mark Forster. He submitted a claim to Lincoln because he was riding his bike eastbound on the sidewalk abutting Seacrest Field on A Street when he hit a defect in the sidewalk, wrecked, and sustained some injuries. The specifics of the incident are included in the claim that was submitted to Lincoln. I'm really just here to answer any questions that the council may have for me.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on a claim? Very good. Staff questions?
Jeff, do you want to come up?
Jeff Kirkpatrick, City Attorney.
I know, okay, so the claim that the attorney was representing for Mark Forster has been denied. Can you give us any background on that?
Right, our recommendation is for denial. This was a claim resulting from him riding a bicycle along A Street, not far from Seacrest, actually within 100 yards of where Seacrest Field is. There was a defect in the sidewalk. There's about a three-inch gap, and as you probably know, anytime when we have a gap of two inches or more, we consider that to be something that needs to be fixed as soon as we can. The reason why we've recommended denial on this claim is the first time we have a record notice of this particular defect was after he had his unfortunate accident. Don't know the level of his injuries, but from our analysis, that's the first time we knew about it. We went out, I think the next month, in July, and got that repaired. And so it's like a lot of other claims that come before this body, we recommend denial if we had no notice of it prior to the accident.
Cindy.
So thanks for being here and speaking to this matter. My understanding is right now, in fact, one of the things we've been working on for the Transportation Coalition is we don't really have an inspection schedule for sidewalks. We rely on the complaint or some type of report by citizens. Is that correct?
I think that's correct. I think the exception, and you probably talked about in your Transportation Committee, would be if we're doing work in the neighborhood, I think Public Works would be looking to see, and certainly if we're tearing up sidewalk, we could replace it in new condition, but that's true. And so with our new Beehive, relatively new Beehive software, when we get a call, like if I call in and say I've got this defect in my sidewalk, which I do by the way, it's just not two inches, I keep measuring it, then it goes into Beehive, and then there's a priority listing. And so this defect, for example, because it was three inches, was fairly high on our priority list, and so.
But not prior to the accident, it wasn't reported?
Right, afterwards. But once it was reported, we knew the type of defect that was there, because of the depth of the defect, it moved up on our priority list, and we responded fairly quickly.
Carl?
So Jeff, this isn't quite the season yet, but you know, people are putting Christmas stuff up already. So this is kind of like a pothole, right?
Right.
So situation where somebody hits a pothole, damages a tire or wheel, and if we don't know about it, we're not negligent because we can't have known to fix it if we didn't know.
This is actually, it's not pothole season, it's tree branch season.
Okay.
And so, I mean, it is the same theory. If there's a healthy-looking tree, wind comes up, tree branch, healthy tree branch falls down, falls on somebody's truck. I mean, that's unfortunate, but we had no way of knowing that there was a weakness in that tree prior to that branch falling.
Could you just have Mickey come up for a second?
Hi, Nikki Esposito, Director of Public Works and Utilities.
Just wanted to ask a little bit more about sidewalks because your department has undertaken a massive citywide operation to address the backlog of sidewalk repairs.
Yes.
If there isn't a regular inspection schedule, what kind of inspection has taken place as a result of that process? And, you know, was this area just not covered in that?
We, so because of liability concerns, and Cindy Lamb was right, that we don't do a inventory unless we're going to hit a specific neighborhood, a neighborhood contract, and inspections are done, and then we come in with a contractor to amend any priority repair. And you're right, we spent close to $8 million on a mass push for sidewalk fixes in the last six years, and we continue to now have appropriate funding levels for our sidewalk repair program. So as soon as we get a complaint, we go out and inspect right away and classify that as either a priority repair or non-priority repair or discretionary repair. We track everything, but if it is something that exceeds two inches or above, we either try to fix it right away or put it on our priority repair list.
Well, the maps that Thomas Schaefer has shown us in the past with all the red lines about where there are sidewalk gaps, those were all complaint basis. None of those were like a system-wide sort of evaluation?
Right, so we had, and we eradicated a lot of those that were kind of lingering for a while, but those two, I'm sorry, about four years ago were completely eradicated. But with good work comes more work, and we get more complaints about where those locations are, and so we make sure to classify them appropriately and then address them as we have resources. And this is a case where it sounds like we got out and actually made the fix, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any other staff questions? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 19, approving a labor contract between the city and the Lincoln Firefighters Association for a term effective August 11, 2016, through August 31, 2017.
Good afternoon, council. Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. We are presenting to you a one-year agreement with IAFF Local 644. Highlights of this contract, it's a one-year contract, it's actually retroactive as it expired in August 31 of 2017. It's a 3% economic increase to the firefighters and commensurate increase to paramedic differential.
Where are we in the current negotiations for this?
We're in the process of getting those scheduled.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item 20, approving a contract between the city and Treat America Food Services for the annual services for meal preparation, Aging Partners Program for a four-year term with the option to renew for one additional four-year term.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Randall Jones. I'm Director of Aging Partners for the City of Lincoln. The resolution before you will allow us to change our food preparation model from an in-house central kitchen operation to a private vendor at a more efficient cost. It will also provide immense flexibility for us in the future. The Senior Meal Program provides over 64,000 meals annually at 11 congregate meal sites throughout Lincoln and Lancaster County. These meals served 939 unduplicated clients last year. Purpose of the change is to reduce our meal costs, prepare us for a possible future move to Victory Park, and eliminate our need to pay for future kitchen depreciation and transportation while reducing our investment in staff. Currently, our kitchen is, various parts and pieces are 20 to 30 years old. We understand that members will have questions and concerns about quality of food, and we're glad for that because we share our need to be on top of the quality that comes out of this contract. The vendor comes highly recommended by our partner agency in the Omaha area, the Northeast Nebraska Office Area Agency on Aging. They're utilizing this vendor and are very, very pleased with both the quality as well as customer service. Our registered dietitian and cook will be on staff to monitor the successful performance on the contract on a regular basis. We performed an unannounced visit that included actually cod, and this was to a far-reaching area in rural Sarpy County, and we thought cod would be a good test because it's difficult to ship it and keep it hot and quality, and we're very pleased with the outcome of that meal. And we've also built in quality checks in the future and temperature checks as it relates to the need to maintain healthy levels of temperature. Be happy to answer any questions that the council has.
Now, we've had received a request to delay the vote on this.
Yes.
And so later, just so everybody knows, later in this meeting, there'll be a motion to delay the vote, including keeping public testimony open. So if anyone's here wants to testify today, they're welcome to do so, but there will be an opportunity again on the 16th of October.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Yes?
Randy, I know you said the food service is coming from Omaha, the delivery. Do you have a backup plan in case there's inclement weather to make sure that the meals get delivered from Omaha to Lincoln?
We do. It was one of our first concerns expressed to the vendor, and they are extremely dedicated to serving the Lincoln area because they also have other clients in the area. We prepare for that just on a normal basis. We have what are called shelf-ready meals that clients take home. We don't want the clients out on the streets or on the sidewalks when it's icy or inclement weather, so we prepare for that in advance so they do have those meals. These meals are designed to only reach one-third of the daily dietary needs for the client. We don't want them dependent on these meals, but we know many of them are from a nutritional standpoint.
Thank you.
Carl?
Yeah, just needed to clarify, pre-council, I thought you asked for a one-week delay.
Is it one week?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, one week. Please. Yeah. Okay. Cindy?
Thank you. So I think the reason that some people might have questions about quality is because you've had some darn good cooks over there.
We do.
(laughing) So the food is really good. Every once in a while, I've dropped into a center and eaten, and it's wonderful. I'm glad to hear about the checks, and you and I spoke a little bit before this, and I'd just like maybe have you shed some light for my colleagues on the ways that you have arranged for the quality check as far as temperatures and so forth, and the difference in how the food delivery is going to be handled in order to ensure that food safety.
Sure. Just as background, this is a picture of one of the areas of the vendor, a very sophisticated operation. Treat America serves 120 facilities with meal service. We have 11 senior centers, and some of those centers, we serve congregate meals. That would be bulk meals that are then served on-site. For the smaller centers like Bennett, Firth, which have 15 or fewer clients, we'll be placing the food, the same type of food, into a hot, ready-to-eat, individual compartmentalized tray that has a seal over the top of it. It's much easier to maintain the proper temperature on these foods when they're packaged this way for small quantities. The larger centers like Downtown, like Northeast, will receive bulk food in containers. They will be at temperature for eating and maintained at that temperature there, and they'll be served by our staff at those various centers. So the goal, councilmember, is to make sure that it's a seamless transition for our clients. We plan on visiting the centers frequently after the transition. We're also measuring temperature on each delivery and logging that so that we can monitor the temperature of the food delivery.
And if councilmembers want to visit randomly one of these locations, do we need to call ahead or?
Always, yes. Well, we would like 24-hour notice, yes. We try to, you know, one of the ways that we try to reduce our costs is to make sure we're managing any food waste. So the closer that we can come to reservations and actual food eating, the better. So we'd like, yeah, give me a call, I'm happy to.
And the cost is pretty nominal.
$8 suggested contribution, and also for 50, when I eat, I have to pay the full amount of $8. The $4 is a requested contribution for seniors.
Thank you.
This is funded through city, county, USDA, Older Americans Act funding, and the standards by which we have to receive the food follows USDA guidelines for seniors as well as Health Department and USDA guidelines.
Okay, other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I will call items 21 and 22 together. They are approving the Hoover Pharma Redevelopment Agreement between the city and Hoover Pharma Incorporated relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 245 Southwest 40th Street as well as amending the fiscal year 1718 CIP to authorize and appropriate $500,000 in TIF funds.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, and the applicant in this case should sound familiar because we were here just last week. It's because this company wants to move expeditiously to build in Lincoln, to expand, and to get underway. So we've done everything that we can to comport with their needs, and this schedule includes that. Their investment is just under $5 million, $4,250,000. It should generate about $500,000 in tax increment financing. The first 1% and the first bond construction comes to us, but after that is to be spent for site acquisition. Site acquisition in this case was a figure of $750,000 to secure the eight acres that represent this location. It doesn't have to do with utilities or facade or energy savings or some of the other things that we normally do. The money's for site acquisition, although there are two buildings, one at 10,000 square foot, one at 20,000 square foot. They've pictured the larger of the two, a microbiology laboratory, research space with a mezzanine and offices as well. The company is originally Bulgarian. It has an international flavor, although it does exist in America in two locations that were under consideration for this expansion, both in North Carolina and in Nebraska, and we were the winners, if you will, for the expansion that Hoover Pharma was about to make. Their developers have been here in the past and are here again if you'd like to ask them questions, and I'll be happy to answer questions that you might have for me.
Lyrian?
David, I wanted to ask you more about the site acquisition costs because in the staff report, the.
Yep, there you go.
Thank you. In the staff report, the property's assessed value is $300,000. You mentioned site acquisition being as much as $750,000. Can you help explain the difference?
Sure. The assessed value is what our assessor believes to be the commercial value or value of land. It's a mass appraisal process. It's generally on the basis of square footage and usage. It's not uncommon for them to never visit the inside of a building or to examine each and individual property very carefully for their characteristics. So they draw general terms and they apply them as best they can to locations. On occasion, they'll use comparable sales. On occasion, they'll use income stream, and on occasion, they'll just do a mass appraisal based on square footage. So the assessed value will be the assessor's guess as to the market value. When push comes to shove is when a buyer and a seller meet. I suppose the most dramatic example I can give you is that the assessed value of the last piece of property that a surety bought to build their corporate headquarters was assessed at $60,000. The willing buyer and the willing seller sold that piece of property for $400,000. And the reason is what the assessor's office says the value of the land is, is very different from that moment in time when a buyer and a seller agree to prices. It is common for purchase prices to be higher than the assessed value unless we're in a bargain basement, need to get out of town, I've got a new job, and I need to unload this. They can occur both places, but the assessed value is a guess is what a willing buyer and a willing seller would do. But willing buyers and willing sellers are not, they're not to be out guessed in a case like this.
Okay, Cindy.
Yeah, thank you. Can you tell me when this area was blighted?
The West O area would have been, there were projects before I got there, so there would have been about 2000, I'm going to guess 2004, but I can be happy to try to get a number for it. I can tell you this, it's longer ago than 10 years, it's 12 or 14 years since the blight designation was created.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Carl?
And this is Southwest 40th Street, behind Dillon Tire, across, roughly across from the New County Jail, is that?
It's close to the New County Jail. This is a description of the area. Here's West O.
Right.
Here's Southwest 40th Street, and this is the property that we're talking about.
Okay, thank you. Lyrian?
I'd like to go back to the question of the value. Does the TIF increment get adjusted based on the sale price of the property, or do you use the assessor's estimate? Because obviously, there's a big difference in what that ultimate difference would be over time.
Right. The increment is created by the comparison of two numbers. The tax valuation for the assessor in the base year that applies, and then the tax valuation that is recreated, is created when the project is done. And that leap can be, well, that leap is what the difference is. The existing tax valuation is money that we treat as a base that gets distributed to schools and NRDs uninterruptedly throughout the entire period, but the growth between the base year and the new tax valuation is the increment spread over 15 years.
Right, so my question is, is the base valuation going to be that $300,000 figure? Right. So, my question is, is the base valuation going to be that $300,000 figure or the $750,000 figure?
It'll be the $300,000 figure. It'll be the tax valuation. It's the, what happens is, we've been paying taxes not on $700,000. Taxes have been being paid on $300,000 of valuation. Now, taxes will be paid on whatever the new valuation is, and the increment of those which are tax dollars are applicable to the purposes of the TIF project.
So, how does that, sorry, so how does that work with the TIF calculation in this case? Do you have a new valuation that affects the 15-year period, or will you use that 300, and the change in time won't matter until the end of the 15-year period?
No. What'll happen is...
Valuation won't be factored until the end of the 15 years, 15 years?
The $300,000 valuation is today, so its previous use, if you take a look, it was essentially unoccupied land. In about a year's time, there are going to be 30,000 square feet of office building and laboratory, and that will be valued, and the valuation will grow then, not later, but then. And it'll take us 12 months, depending whatever the construction cycle is, and then that will be the new value, and that value will probably grow modestly over time. It's not uncommon for the properties in Lincoln to grow in gross a little less than 2% a year. It's not that everybody's valuation goes up 2%, but your valuation will stay stable, and then it'll go up 6% or 8% every four years or five years when valuation's got. But if you were to smooth that line out, there's roughly about a just under 2% growth of valuation. So, today's value, then the new building's value, and then that slight gradual growth over time of valuation are the places where the tax increment are figured from.
Not from a freeze of the first-year value?
No. That's frozen for the purpose that when the increment is done, that we know that and keep it, because when that taxpayer pays, the taxes on that first $300,000 are distributed to the school, county, and city, and then from above there, it's available for the use of executing the TIF agreement. So, we freeze that number for the purpose of making sure that the value that we're today getting from this property continues to go to the political subdivisions.
Okay. Any other questions? Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair, members of the council, my name is Tom Houston. My address is 233 South 13th Street, Suite 1900 here in Lincoln. Appearing before you today on behalf of Hoover Pharma Inc. With me today is also Chris Borches, who you met last week, who's the Director of Biological Services for Hoover Pharma, and also Doug Rasmussen, the Site Selection Coordinator for this project. With the two items on your agenda, between the redevelopment agreement and the CIP amendment, I wanted to focus just a little bit on the redevelopment agreement, which really implements the plan amendment that we discussed last week. Hoover Pharma is an international healthcare product, has a manufacturing facility here in Lincoln, has had so for several years, realized it really needed to get into its own research and development facility, and Lincoln was in competition with another site. The selection was made to locate the research and development facility here in Lincoln as opposed to Larenburg, North Carolina, which I did not know that Councilmember Eskridge went to college there. The project is located on South 40th Street. It is directly west of the County Correctional Facility. This Phase 1 project will consist of the two buildings, approximately 30,000 square foot facility. I want to talk a little bit about the TIF sizing because it kind of leads into the question raised by Councilmember Baird. When we were sizing this tax increment financing component, we always have to look at, you know, the base value. And mechanically, what happens is, the base value is established as of January 1st, 2017. We do that in the redevelopment agreement by the establishment of an effective date. And the effective date under this redevelopment agreement contemplates January 1st, 2018, which, under the community development law, means the base value is determined as of January 1st, 2017. That number does not change for the entirety of the TIF capture period. So, that base value will be there throughout the entirety of the TIF capture period. We also know that the assessed valuation rarely equals cost. You heard Director Landis mention that this facility will cost in excess of $4.5 to $5.000 to construct. For purposes of tax increment financing, in utilizing the county assessor's methodology for valuation, we pegged the tax value at approximately $2.1 million, which yields approximately $500,000 of tax increment financing. That's a lot, that valuation, that projected valuation of $2.1 million is a lot less than the cost of $5 million. But that's the way, what we try to do is be accurate as we can when we're trying to size the tax increment financing component. We know that cost rarely equals assessed value, but likewise, the property here that was involved is approximately 8.6 acres, which is approximately 375,000 square feet, which this purchase price that is being paid is approximately $2 per square foot, which is right in the wheelhouse of fair market value determinations for industrial ground. So, we think that the, one of the things that we have seen, you've seen a trend in Lincoln that we've tried to focus more in one of the eligible uses of site acquisition, primarily for the ease of the cost certification process, because the redevelopment agreement does require the redeveloper to go through the certification process, because the city's very diligent in making sure that the redeveloper does prove up that these are eligible costs. It's really easy with site acquisition costs because we show a settlement statement when the ground is purchased that establishes that the price was paid. And it's much easier for that certification process, so there has been a renewed emphasis in using tax increment financing for that component. I guess the other thing I would ask for you today is that the two items on your agenda, we anticipate that the bond ordinance would come forward in several weeks, sometime in October, and that's primarily designed to accommodate the schedule of Hoover Pharma and the present need to acquire the ground before the end of this month. We anticipate if the acquisition is made prior to the end of September, grading and construction would commence this fall, and then construction would be completed sometime in approximately July of 2018. I would ask for your approval of this project as Hoover Pharma ceased to expand in the city of Lincoln, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Mr. Houston?
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
I did check with staff, and this was declared blighted in September of 2005. The next item, then, would be Item 23, approving the 2017-18 city tax rate of .31648 per $100 of assessed valuation.
Brandon Kaufman, Finance Director. So, on August 28th, the City Council heard an amendment, proposed amendments to the 2016-2018 city of Lincoln budget, and that was for the fiscal year 2017-2018. The proposed amendments were approved on the 28th, and that established property tax revenue of $64,934,996. The proposed tax rate is a decrease from the current rate of .33366 to .31648, a tax decrease, takes, tax rate decrease of .0718, or about a 5% decrease. Under Nebraska statute, it requires the governing body to file and certify with the county clerk on or before October 13th.
Cindy?
Thank you. I just want to clarify, excuse me, looking at the 1618 biennium, we indicated on page four of our summary that the net change in revenue for the city was going to be $2,388,258. And I'm wanting to clarify that this levy actually will generate a million more than that.
It'll, so there's about a $1.1 million increase from what was set in the prior year. That will generate, you basically have to back off 10% because of the charter, but then that will generate a million dollars that will be set aside for hiring police officers and then fire equipment.
Okay. So, what we showed in our biennium, then, if we add 1.1 million to that, we'll get what the levy, the figure will be, what the levy will bring for anticipated budget revenue.
The total, the total property tax revenue at that 90% will be $58,438,796.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Next item, please.
All right. We'll go on to our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Item 24, approving a lease agreement between the city and Silver Properties LLC for a lease for a three-year term for use by the Lincoln Police Department.
Would anyone else, would anyone like to speak on this item? Okay. Thank you. Next item, please.
All right. Next is Item 25, Street and Alley Vacation 17007, vacating the north-south alley between Gladstone and Judson Streets, between North 53rd and North 54th Streets.
David Carey with the City-City County Planning Department here on behalf of the applicant. This is an item where we have a north-south alley that is, has not been used for an alley, does not have a future use as an alley, has been taken care of by the adjoining property owners for many years. We also have the payment for the alley vacation in hand, therefore it can come forward at this point for this purpose. And other than that, I'm here for any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Carey?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is Item 26, Cop Plan Conformance 17015, declaring approximately 13,400 square feet of property generally located adjacent to Layton Avenue between 43rd and 45th Streets as surplus property.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case. We have an orphaned piece of property that's just been below the radar for a rather long time. It's 20 feet wide. It's trenches overcome by overgrowth and the like, in an area surrounded on all sides by the university. Out by, well, 48th Street would be over here. This is 44th Street, and this is that area of land, as you know, perhaps just to the south of Layton Avenue. Originally, there was a thought that Layton Street would run this way. The university, first city transferred this to us in 1964. It never got turned into a street. Layton Avenue took a turn this way. And in the intervening years, nobody's been disturbed by the fact that there's a bunch of volunteer trees growing in it. The watershed area does say that a conservation easement needs to be returned or maintained on this property, but there's no known city use. No city agency or other agency has shown an interest, other than the university, who basically says, you know, after 50 years, could we have our land back? So, to do that as a possibility, we need to surplus the land. Anyway, this is the piece. Planning Commission saw it, ruled on it as unanimously in favor of it, and we would ask that we be allowed to surplus the property for its eventual disposition to some other party besides ourselves.
Questions for Mr. Landis?
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Next item, please.
All right. Next would be Item 27, Change of Zone 16036A, application of Wilderness Hill LLC to amend the Wilderness Hill's commercial planned unit development to add motorized vehicle sales and repair service, early childhood care facilities, academies, and private schools as allowed uses, with a waiver to side yard setbacks on property generally located at the southeast corner of South 27th and Yankee Hill Road.
Someone here to testify on this item?
David Carey with the City-City County Planning Department, not seeing the applicant in the audience. I can briefly summarize this. We have a proposal for Outlet H and Lot 20 on this previously approved plan to allow for vehicle sales in that area. That does make sense mainly due to the fact that the pattern of the uses there would be consistent. There is a planned multifamily use south of this area that is similar to what is already to the east of here with vehicle, motor vehicle sales. So, that would be a continuation of that pattern of uses. And then on Lot 24, what we have is an area that, a lot that's not developed on yet. This is being identified for the use, to allow the use of early childhood care services. This is to clarify that that use is allowed in that lot. Basically, not going to be a hindrance to the neighborhood, not going to be a negative. In fact, you could argue that that would be a positive for that type of use in this area. So, that is the proposal. It's fairly straightforward. I can try to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Learyn?
David, on the site-specific conditions for this, page five of the staff report, Item 1.1.3 says the developer is responsible for determining if new drainage or grading is necessary based on these changes. Are they aware of that provision, and are they, you know, prepared to take action if necessary, or do you have any follow-up with them if they do determine that that's necessary?
Yeah. My understanding is that they are well aware of that. That is a typical comment for any type of change like this, and those calculations are often changed along with these types of changes. Again, this change is not going to be that impactful the way that it's been done.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item.
All right. Next is Item 28, Text Amendment 17012, amending Chapter 27.72 of the Lincoln municipal code relating to the zoning ordinance, height and lot regulations by amending Section 27.72.120 to provide that an accessory building attached to the main building by an unenclosed deck or walkway shall not be considered part of the main building and subject to the height and yard requirement of the main building, and repealing Section 27.72.120 of the Lincoln municipal code as hitherto existing.
David Carey with the City-City County Planning Department here as the applicant, or in support of the applicant on this. This change is, I would coin it more as a clarification on what the intention always was moving in the past with the existing language and needing to clarify that language, so that the situation that we're dealing with in this case is to identify that a walkway that is not enclosed and covered, same thing with uncovered decks and patios, not be considered part of the main structure for the purpose of the way that setbacks are set up and enforced on a lot. In this case, what we have is, we have an above-ground pool. The request was to allow for an elevated walkway to connect an elevated deck to the pool that would be uncovered. Under the current language, that basically, the strict interpretation of the language would say that that means that that structure is part of the main use, and therefore needs to be abiding by the setbacks of the main structure. That would make it fairly prohibitive in this case and in many other cases to have some structures abide by those setbacks. So, this is a clarification to say that under the condition of an uncovered walkway, patio, or deck, that those setbacks would not have to be abided by in that case on the lot. So, that really is what this is for, is a common sense type of interpretation, but the need is to clarify the language specifically for this purpose.
Questions? Cindy?
So, what happens if, like, someone puts in a patio or deck or whatever, and then later turns it into, say, a sunroom? Then, is there going to be a problem with the setback?
Yeah. So, the control on this would be the covering of that, of that structure. And so, that would be something that Building and Safety would be, have to be involved in as far as interpreting what they can and can't do at that point. So, there would have to be information provided to the property owner to let them know what would be needed. Now, if they meet the setbacks, which may or may not be the case, it may not matter, but that is something that would be brought up at the time of that type of a permit.
And presumably, they'd pull a permit and sell building and say to beware of that.
Correct.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right. Next is Item 29, Change of Zone 17020, application of Lancaster County Board of Commissioners to designate Traybert Hall as a landmark, changing the zoning district from P Public to R4 Residential with landmark overlay on property generally located at 2202 South 11th Street.
Ed Zimmer, Planning Department. This is a request that came to us from the county board as they prepare to consider, like, they plan to dispose of Traybert Hall. It needs a zoning category other than P Public, which it currently has, because if they sell it, cannot be used by a private party for private uses under P Public zoning. In consultation with the department, we recommended that R4... In consultation with the department, we recommended that R four, the adjacent zoning to the west and the south, was the most appropriate zoning category for the land on which sits a five-story building. And so to prepare for the sale in an appropriate way that also might return appropriate value to the county, we recommended landmark designation for the building to give them access to the special permit process, and they've, they accepted that recommendation. Planning Commission recommended approval of that special permit, which would allow the building to be, continue to be used either for offices or for dwelling units or a combination of the two. That action, it was final at Planning Commission with the condition that you approve the landmark. So it's final, but not final, with it depending upon you accepting the landmark designation. As a package, it seems the most prudent way of dealing with this property. It recognizes the value of a building built in nineteen twenty-eight, the last large freestanding structure associated with the historic St. Elizabeth Hospital, designed by a nationally prominent firm DX Murphy and Brother, and really quite handsome, well-built, well-used and maybe somewhat worn, but sturdy adaptable building. Either use continues something similar to what it was originally, nurses' residence, or the way it's been used for almost half a century as offices for a variety of county purposes, and there's parking for either one. So it seems a package that protects the neighborhood, protects the public interest, and prepares it for its next generation of use. And so it's been recommended to you by the Preservation Commission and by the Planning Commission and by our department. Happy to take your questions.
Carl?
Thank you. So if I hear you right, you're saying that it could continue to be used as offices or it could go back to the original use as, as residents?
Not exactly the original use, but a related.
All right.
Wouldn't just be nurses.
Any other uses?
In, in this package, anything allowed under the R four, they could ask for, but what's allowed under the R four is residential uses. The, the sixty units that are provided in the special permit are very similar to what that amount of land, I think a little less than what that amount of land could carry if it were under a community unit plan for special permit for use. But it seems like the landmark designation, which also gives it the possibility of some of the tax incentives if there are rehab came forward, is what it, what it's prepared for now. If a developer had a different idea, they'd have to bring it back through the process of the special permit. So it's R four, the special permit, or ask again.
Okay, thank you.
Jane?
So to clarify, so if a developer would like to convert it to residential, does that include demolition of the existing structure?
Not if they want to take advantage of the special permit for it being a landmark.
So they could decline this, the advantage of the special permit, but they could still utilize the land in a different way?
Under our landmark provision, there would be review, let's assume the Preservation Commission would deny their request, we would talk to them for up to six months, and at the end of that time, we would be compelled by the ordinance twenty-seven fifty-seven to issue them a certificate of allowance to demolish the building.
Okay, thank you.
So it has flexibility, both in use and in, and in whether they would be using the building.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item thirty, approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and Anderson Homes Incorporated for the sale of city-owned property generally located near the intersection of West Redberry and West Thatcher Lanes.
Members of the City Council, David Landis, Urban Development Department Director, the applicant in this case, we have a piece of land that we originally got because of a homeowner's association that basically disappeared, and a developer who'd let them use some land for communal purposes until there were no landowners and participants in the operation. It was at Cathedral Heights Edition. And so the, the fact that the developer didn't want the land and that there was no neighborhood association or neighbors' association that wanted to be responsible for it, the city was approached about it because it was overgrown and not well taken care of, and we thought that we could have a quiet title action. No one stepped forward, and the city now owns the property. And in fact, it's this location in northwest Lincoln. This is Redberry Lane, I've never been there, this is northwest Fifty-third Street, and this is Thatcher Lane, and it's this piece of property here. An odd leg to it down here, not really likely to be buildable, but an area that certainly would provide the space for building. If you were to take a look at the same thing here, is that long section where I think we could anticipate construction and then perhaps an extensive side yard or a dog run or whatever. Knowing the city's interest in affordable housing, we did approach one, this was before us, the Lincoln Housing Authority, Neighbor Works, and several of the folks that work in the area, trying to solicit an offer from them that was not forthcoming, but in that period of time in which we tell the public that this land is city-owned and available for purchase, there was a party that stepped forward, and it's Scott Anderson. Scott's likely, well, he will need to, to replat the land before he builds, but he's offered us twenty-four thousand dollars. Our, our real estate division in my department says that's a reasonable number given the circumstances, and that in fact, since there is no civic purpose for the land, we will start to have to pay real estate taxes in the event we don't part with this property. We'd as soon not maintain it, we'd as soon not pay taxes to ourselves and others, we'd as soon be in the private sector, and we have a reasonable offer on the table from a builder. We want to accept that and close the deal. Other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is item thirty-one, approving a lease purchase agreement between the city and Stryker Sales Corporation for the purpose of purchasing LifePak monitor defibrillators and a video laryngoscope.
Good afternoon. Roger Honin, Lincoln Fire and Rescue Division Chief in Charge of EMS. I'm here to support our purchasing twenty-seven new LifePak fifteens. Our original LifePaks were purchased back in two thou, excuse me, in two thousand eleven for a cost of about eight hundred and sixteen thousand. They were paid, placed in service in March of that year, and are currently eight and a half, or excuse me, six and a half years old. These devices are carried on every medic unit and every engine company in the city of Lincoln, and they're often used multiple times a day. These devices are the cornerstone of our STEMI, our heart attack protocol, and our cardiac arrest success. We have the opportunity to replace these LifePaks through Stryker Financial Flex for about four hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. This is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars less than we paid for the same device back in two thousand eleven. This was made possible through a very substantial grant through the Leona M. Helmsley Charitable Trust. Physio Control has also offered us seven thousand dollars per twenty-seven, those twenty-seven devices to replace them. Replacement cost at this time without the trust fund and the trade-in would be about nine hundred and seventy-six thousand. I would entertain any questions?
Other questions? I have one.
Yes.
It says, and a video laryngoscope. Just one?
Just one.
And what, what do we use that for? I know what they're used for, but what is the LFR going to do with it?
Well, we currently have one on our EMS supervisor vehicle. We would use this one for training or a substitute. It was part of the, the Flex Finance Plan that they, we purchased two types of capital devices. This was the most least expensive of the devices.
So it's used for training, not for patient treatment?
Right.
Okay.
And if our EMS supervisor vehicle one would break, we would have a spare.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Just had some questions about the finances, and I understand this is coming out of the Emergency Medical Services Enterprise Fund. So do you have a regular line item then for equipment? So you've budgeted for these, to pay off the lease payments?
Yes, we're trying to start replacement. Before, in two thousand eleven, our LifePaks, they were purchased originally around nineteen, nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand, and they became, they were over ten years old. We currently have them maintained through a lease or through a maintenance program, through Physio Control. At that time, those devices were in such bad shape that they wouldn't, they wouldn't continue to maintain them, so our back was kind of against the wall, that's why we bought these. So I would like to start putting money aside for capital replacement of, of devices like this.
Okay, and this will take several years to get them all in place, or will they all be in place in just several years to pay it off?
Several years to pay it off.
Okay.
We anticipate delivery before the first of the year.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hey, Carl?
Yeah, so thanks for, for doing this, and it looks like, you know, through the trust grant and the, the trade-in, we're saving five hundred plus thousand dollars.
Right around five hundred thousand.
So what's the price of a new ambulance or medic unit?
I think the one we currently spec is about two hundred and fifty thousand.
That might get us two ambulances, huh? Just the save, that, that savings would buy two ambulances or medic units, wouldn't it? Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, good.
Okay, other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next I'll call items thirty-two through thirty-five together. They are approving an amendment number one to the annexation agreement between the city and the Rockabye Road Coalition Property Park, property owners, to approve an alternate road design for the paving of Rockabye Road from South Seventieth to South Eighty-Fourth Street, and to provide funding for the construction of Rockabye Road from South Seventieth to Carpathian Way as the initial phase of construction, and to provide funding for the LES Rockabye Road intersection improvements, and to approve two regional detention cells to meet the stormwater detention needs of the Coalition watershed property. Comp Plan Conformance one seven zero one zero, declaring approximately thirty-four and a half acres of property generally located at South Eighty-Fourth and Yankee Hill as surplus. Comp Plan Amendment one seven zero zero three, amending the twenty forty Comp Plan by re-designating future land uses in the area of Jensen Park from urban density residential and industrial to green space and from open space to urban density residential and commercial on property located at South Eighty-Fourth and Yankee Hill, and approving a land exchange agreement among the city, Milton Telcot, Carol Telcot, and R.C. Kruger Development Company to reconfigure Jensen Park by exchanging approximately thirty-five acres of park property on the south side of the park for approximately forty acres of private property on the east side of the park.
Good afternoon, Nicole Fleck Tuas with Lincoln Parks and Recreation. I'd like to speak to you about items thirty-three through thirty-five, and then I know we have representatives for the Rockabye Road Coalition here to speak to item thirty-two, as well as some of the others. Items thirty-three through thirty-five have to do with a land exchange agreement for a portion of Jensen Park, and I know, as you've been familiar, we've been working on this for some time, and we've kind of finally got it to the point to finalize it and bring it before you today. Item thirty-five is the actual agreement, and items thirty-three and thirty-four are comprehensive plan conformance and a comprehensive plan amendment that relate to that item. If I could switch over to the, the map on the screen. The basic exchange is to facilitate an exchange where the city acquires land to the east of the park, and the developer would acquire the city property shown in orange on the south side of the park. And we've talked about this for, for some time. As development has moved forward within this area, we see a lot of benefits both on the, the public side and the private side for this exchange. We would have the ability to have a more efficient use and layout for both private development but also for the parkland. And ultimately, we would gain just over five acres within the park. This is dedicated parkland, but we're able to pursue it in a way here that's really more of a reconfiguration of the park. We're not losing any land. In fact, we're gaining land and gaining greater usability for the park. Couple of the key things that we would be able to do with, with this land exchange, we'd be able to eliminate about a three-quarter mile-long sewer that would otherwise need to go up through Jensen Park to serve what would otherwise be private property to the east of the park. We'd also have to provide for a street connection, a public street connection from Yankee Hill Road down through the park to reach that, that easternmost development. Obviously, with, you know, about a hundred and seventy acres of parkland in the middle there, it's really an inefficient use at the upper end of this watershed to try to develop around that. So, and in terms of the park, again, we get about an additional five acres of parkland, but we also have much greater usable area, the ability to lay out playing fields, soccer fields, in a much more efficient way and get, get a greater number of those. We also have lower, lower grading costs because of how that area would grade out. So what we've done is kind of put together this agreement process and timeline for that exchange, and honoring some of the provisions that we had in the agreement with Lincoln Public Schools in terms of zoning. This would provide for the developer to commit to the cost for construction of Hayek Drive and the crossing of the drainage way through Jensen Park. The city would in turn provide for a stormwater easement where a control structure could be placed at South Eighty-Fourth Street and allow for detention for the Rockabye Coalition within that area, which is a natural drainage way and would continue to remain so. It would also provide for about a hundred thousand dollars from Mr. Kruger as a contribution for the difference in the value of the properties, and also Kruger would make a charitable contribution for a playground to be located in the southern portion of the park that would ultimately serve that neighborhood park purpose. So a number of different things as part of, part of that exchange. This map shows then the related item for the proposed land use change, and so as part of that, the portion of, to the east of Jensen Park, which is today identified as a future land use for, for residential urban and for commercial, would go to green space for park. And then on the south side here, what, what is identified as green space today as part of the, part of the park would go to commercial for a small portion along Eighty-Fourth Street, and then to urban residential density in the south side. So as part of this agreement, the city would be committing to future commercial O-three development along Southwest Eighty-Fourth Street for this smaller portion of the area to be exchanged, and then the rest of it would be in a residential use. And with that, I'd be available to, to answer any questions that you have.
Earl?
I, I think you answered my question already, but on the far southwest corner where the teapot spout is and that green space, that's because of the drainage way?
That's because of the drainage way, that's right, yeah.
Okay.
See if I have an aerial that shows that.
Thank you.
I think there's an aerial that's part of your agreement that you could kind of see that drainage way is located right in through here, and, and water as part of that detention would then back up from the control, the control structure along Eighty-Fourth Street.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item or these items?
Good afternoon, Kent Seacrest and Danae Kowkowsky. We're doing a one-two because we worked on different parts of the seventy-eight-page agreement that's in front of you, which is an amendment to a prior two thousand fifteen annexation agreement. Mike Eckert with Civil Design is here for any engineering-type questions, and Rick Kruger is also here because he's involved in one of the key parcels that you just heard about on the land exchange basis. We start back in two thousand and six when we came forward with the city with a development agreement and how to sewer this area, and we amended the comprehensive plan and agreed to do a master plan and a watershed, master plan process as well. That came together formally in two thousand fifteen when we did the original phased annexation agreement between the city and the coalition. The coalition is thirteen different property owners, so this has been a very interesting coordination effort, but I think it's proved to be very efficient in its design. Uh, what we did in the original is talked about building Roca B Road from Seventieth to Eighty-Fourth, in fact, all the way to Ninety-Sixth Street. And what we talked about there was to do it back in the original agreement, to do it at rural ruts. Well, after further contemplation, I think the Public Works Department did not think that was a wise design. And they thought we should do a better design, including proposed roundabouts at the quarter mile mark. So we did a lot of renegotiation on how to make that go forward, uh, in a fair and equitable manner. And we did that, but back in the original agreement, the city agreed to fund about two-point-six million dollars to rock and grade Roca B Road from Seventieth to Eighty-Fourth Street. What we were then going to do was to build that road under the original agreement with impact fees. So city was going to do the grading and the rocking, and we then come along with our impact fees that the city would then allocate to the paving. As they came in, we would pave sections of the road in segment parts. Well, now back to where we are today, which is the agreement that's finally in front of you, which outlines that we need to change that agreement. And what we're now doing instead is basically, uh, not doing rural ruts. We are doing a roadway that's going to sit basically in the middle of the right-of-way instead of to the north of the right-of-way. And we are going to build two lanes twelve feet wide each direction. And we will use the roundabouts instead of turn lanes, movements. We will also put six feet of shoulder onto these lanes, through lanes. And we're doing about a median that's in the middle, uh, to allow for future growth, someday to four lanes. So we are, in effect, doing a whole new road design. But we still have to figure out, well, how do we put it back together with our original agreements? So the city is still bringing to the table the original two-point-six million dollars to rock and grade the mi- the, the mile section. But instead of, what we're now doing is we're going to pave the first, which is the west half mile of this section, and we're going to do it through a loan. Uh, Roca B Holdings is willing to loan the city what they're short in the way of about five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. It's an interest-free loan, which is very generous by Roca B Road, uh, by Roca B Holdings to do this. The city has some of the million-three for the paving costs, because we've been dealing lots out here. So the city's been able to collect about seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars of impact fees. So we're just short, uh, potentially five hundred and thirty-five thousand to start the paving of the first west half mile of this roadway. So that's what's all in front of you. And then there is another segment of Roca B Road from Eighty-Fourth, uh, to Ninety-Eightth Street. And the, when we did this, city and the LP, LES has come forward and talked about funding that, and LES is building from Eighty-Fourth Street to the east. Uh, so we don't have to address that, other than we have to get our road connections to get to the Coalition's lands, and those are impact fee facilities under this agreement.
The second part of the agreement, uh, really deals with the stormwater and the stormwater master plan. Um, back in the original annexation agreement, this group of property owners was responsible for, um, doing it and having consultants perform a, a stormwater master plan for this area, um, for the upper wagon train watershed. Um, the consultants did complete, uh, that master plan, and you recently, along with the NRD, you know, approved, uh, the upper wagon train watershed master plan. Uh, as part of the analysis for, uh, doing that master plan, one of the benefits of having all of the property owners working together is that the consultants were able to do an analysis to see if it made sense out here to do regional detention, instead of doing detention on a preliminary plat-by-preliminary plat basis with each property owner being responsible for their own detention. And so what the consultants found in doing that study is that with two regional detention cells out here, we could, in essence, provide detention for all of the Coalition properties that are within the, uh, watershed master plan. The Coalition members took a look at the economics of doing that versus doing, you know, individual, uh, ponds, and found out that it made a lot of sense from an economic standpoint to do the regional detention cells. So part of what the amendment to the annexation agreement does is allows us basically to identify those Coalition properties within the hatched area that are, um, within the watershed master plan that would be participating together in this regional detention. Um, it also allows us to identify the two detention cells. Um, one of them, you already talked about just briefly with Nicole, and that's the detention cell that would go in that drainage way that's on the parkland there. So as part of this agreement and the exchange agreement, uh, the park exchange agreement, the city's agreeing to allow a stormwater easement to allow, uh, that area to be used for regional detention by this Coalition. The second cell then is down further to the south and on private property. So the Coalition will be acquiring that land for, um, the regional detention cell. The other thing this annexation agreement does is basically calls out the timing for constructing those two cells. Um, the cell to the north needs to be constructed right away. As soon as anybody's getting ready to develop within the watershed, we need to have the detention in place to, you know, to handle, um, that development. Uh, the further one to the south is not needed until we have about a hundred and fifty acres developed out here. Um, so it allows us to do a little bit more development before we have the cost incurred to construct that cell. Um, the Coalition, uh, because we're not going to be doing these as we typically would as part of a final plat where we're escrowing to guarantee that we'll do the construction, um, of the cells, we are providing those guarantees in the annexation agreement and providing, um, escrow agreements to guarantee that, that they will have the, uh, money in place to design and construct these regional detention cells. So that's part of the agreement. And then finally, um, the agreement provides that ultimately, the long-term maintenance of these ponds is the property owner's responsibility. And like we would do on an individual basis, we are creating a master drainage association out here to allow, obviously, those costs to be passed through to the ultimate users. Um, but in essence, you know, it, it operates a lot like the individual cells today. It's not the city's responsibility, it becomes, you know, the property owner's responsibility. Each owner is still responsible for water quality. Um, the detention ponds are only addressing, you know, the stormwater quantity, not the quality. Um, and then just one other little twist. We have, uh, between now and when you vote next week, we're going to be offering a substitute amendment. And the reason is, we've got one little piece of property here that's trading hands, and that closing's going to occur between now and then. So the substitute agreement that will be in front of you next week will simply just be changing ownership names and a, and a legal, couple of legal descriptions, but the substance of, of the agreement won't change.
Okay, other questions for Ms. Kalkowski and Mr. Seacrest? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, while I'm up here, maybe I'll address real quick the city exchange agreement for the parks. Um, our office has also been working with Milton and Carol Talcott on the land exchange agreement, and also Mr. Kruger. Um, I think I'd just reiterate all of the, um, benefits and positives that Nicole presented and that has been provided in your materials. Um, there are significant benefits to both the private and the public sector with this exchange. So it's really another example, I think, of how we can work together as public and private to come up with, um, situations that are actually, you know, beneficial to both parties. And I think this is a really, really good example of that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions, and Rick's happy to come up and answer any questions you might have on that agreement also.
Questions?
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name's Rick Kruger, President of R.C. Kruger Development Company, Inc., and I'm glad that we're to this point. It seems like it's been about three years we've been working on this, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mr. Kruger?
Carl? Yes, thank you. So the, the residential component of, of your development, what, what do you envision for that?
Well, uh, the piece that's out by Eighty-Fourth there is a little bit of zoning for office and apartments, and that allows us to get our roadway into the, uh, right now, we're thinking probably single-family residential.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to testify on this item? Next item, please.
All right, next is our public hearing ordinance's third reading. Item thirty-six, change of zone one seven zero one-one. Application of Roger H. Schwissel revocable trust for a change of zone from A.G. Agricultural to R-three residential on property generally located at North Forty-Ninth Street and Alvo Road.
Before we take testimony, I'd like to tell everyone that the council has received a request by city law and public, or, and the planning department to delay with testimony for, uh, until the sixteenth of October. Uh, so, but we can, anyone here wants to testify can go ahead and testify, but there, it will be remaining open until the sixteenth of October.
Yes, uh, I'm Roger Schwissel, uh, thirteen fifty-four Pelican Bay Place. Uh, and I would like to request that the delay be no more than two weeks. Uh, I mean, it's already been two months that it's been pushed back, and winter's coming. I really need to go try to get something going on this.
Okay, Carl?
Um, yeah, we, this was a request made to us from staff, so I think we need to hear from staff.
Okay, thank you.
David Carey with the City-City Planning Department.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Carey, we, we just heard from Mr. Schwissel saying that he would request only a two-week delay. Trying to think of a two, you know, we could, we meet in two weeks, but not three weeks. So that, that would work, but you had asked for, or the city had asked for four weeks.
Yeah, I, I think that the ultimate decision is in your hands, except that the, the point, uh, that as staff has been discussing this and trying to get to, um, the reasonable, um, landing spots and some moving parts here, that it's probably likely that the four weeks, um, something more than two weeks is probably needed. However, we will work under the decision that you make at this point in time and do our best to get, uh, different moving parts nailed down here. Um, but I think that, that at this point in time, we feel like the four weeks is probably more doable.
Okay. Cindy?
Thank you. Um, so I know I've been following this, obviously, and, um, I just wanted to, um, have you let my colleagues know there was a meeting with the, uh, property owners in the North Bank Preserves just this past week, isn't that right?
Correct.
Yeah, and then, um, when we were last here, um, there was some discussion. Uh, Mr. Schwissel had said he would be, um, pulling a permit for, uh, some type of, uh, storm tr- uh, water treatment. And, um, that wasn't done until last week either, correct?
That was, that was very recently done, yes.
Oh, okay, so, and then also the, you guys are looking at some of the potential issues of the new phases going forward, is that right?
Yeah, so I, and that gets to the, the heart of the matter of what different things are going on here. We have some issues with the existing area that, um, we believe is, uh, primarily a private matter that needs to be worked out with, between the landowners. Um, there are, uh, the other, the item that's actually before you formally is the change of zone. And that's the area that effectively is the next phase of the development. And we've had discussions about what possibly might be needed and helpful as far as drainage is concerned, as part of that approval. And that's, uh, primarily the part that we're still working on. And then, uh, stepping away from the current proposal and the development that we're talking about, um, this has shed some light on some potential changes in some of our, um, regulations and processes to look at more closely, um, that we want to continue to work on that, to have some reasonable potential changes to our regulations to address drainage concerns. And then that's an item that is going to be an ongoing work effort that probably would not be completely nailed down in four weeks as, either.
Yeah, and you expect, though, that, uh, Mr. Schwissel will be cooperative with you over this next four weeks as you work towards that?
Uh, I, I won't speak for him, um, in particular, but I think the intention is to try to come to, uh, some understanding of what will get done and, and what can and can't get done that's reasonable.
And, but he seemed reasonably responsive when you guys met with him last week.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone, thank you, would anyone else like to testify on this item?
Hi, my name is Pat Cappas, and I'm a resident out at North Bank Preserve at five zero one seven Becky's Way Court. I want to first thank you for taking some steps towards helping us. Um, the Mickey's group is very helpful in just walking around and seeing our situation. We feel as though some, some things may get addressed, and that's, that's helpful, so thank you, first of all. Um, and there's a couple of others out here may say something, but we're, we appreciate their time. Wasn't, it wasn't a short night, so. With that said, um, you know, if, when, when you do move on, I'd like you to consider the fact that it's been a month or three weeks since the council met, and there really hasn't been anything done. Um, if anything gets agreed upon to go forward, please get it in writing, because we've had promises from Roger that just have never been fulfilled, and. So we need stuff written, and we've got emails, but, you know, what good are they really? So that's one thing, and then, if you, if you can, I looked back at the planning meeting stuff, and there was a, there was a question on there that I think really kind of hits here. Um, it says there is an ordinance in place to manage that aspect, which they're speaking about, the topography of the neighbors. And I don't know where that ordinance is and why it's not being addressed out there, because, you know, not just Roger's issue out there, we think it's a lot of the builders. And I, and I think the planning group met with Home Builders Association, so hopefully they can kind of maybe communicate to us that something will be done, because there's another house going up, and we can see that that's quite a bit above elevation level, too. So if, if Roger's got the elevation right, and the builders go in and change it, we've got an issue out there yet, and that's, that's our major concern, so. Hopefully that's being addressed with the meetings, and I can't speak to it, because I think that was Friday, so. Um, hopefully that goes on, and with that, again, just thanks for your help.
Questions? Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
My name is Mark Geesler, I live out at North Bank Preserve. My address is seventy-four oh-one North Fiftieth Street. And to echo Pat's comments, I'd just like to say thank you for, uh, giving us the, thank you for being a set of ears and acting upon what we spoke to last time we were here. And the city officials came out and actually listened, and it felt like the biggest relief ever, because we've been asking and asking, and it felt like there for all the longest time that we were just crazy or something, because, uh, we live out in this little bubble that nobody seems to know where it's at, or there's a community out there, and we're a neighborhood. But to focus on the next phase, I, my property is adjacent to the next phase, so that's why I'm still here today, because I'm very concerned if there wasn't, uh, anything put in place for our Phase One, where my property is now, for the drainage. Uh, I'm really concerned about the next phase, because all they did was build up the lots. And with our meeting last week, uh, we had visitors out there. Uh, Roger commented that they build them up thinking that they won't have a water issue, but my question is, well, what if they do? Uh, right now, we're in the situation where apparently nobody asked that question, uh, when they build our phase, and now we're here trying to figure it out. So I guess I just echo my comments I made last time. I'm concerned genuinely, because the lots behind my house that are in the next phase are eye-level in my window in my living room. And I'm very concerned, as today, with all this rain we've got today. It, my back lot, the back twenty feet of my lot's extremely flat, and it just sits there. Because we don't have actual true dirt, it's clay, and it doesn't absorb it, so it has nowhere for it to go. And I just think it's a genuine concern, uh, all of us. I speak for, I'll say, uh, pardon my neighbors, like, they have bigger issues, but I'm worried there's no houses there now. I have no idea what it's going to be like when you put houses back there. And I just want to make sure I'm voicing my concern for that.
Okay, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Very good, next item, please.
All right, that concludes our public hearing, we can move into the voting session. Public hearing resolutions, item seventeen is approving the Red Fox West Side Grill as a Kino Satellite site at thirteen thirty-nine West O Street, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Carl, seconded by Cindy. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rebold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item eighteen is the report of claims against the city for the period of August sixteen through thirty-first, two thousand and seventeen, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. We have a motion to amend?
Yes, Mr. Mr. President, yeah, yeah.
Yes, Mr. President, yeah, I have a motion, one, to amend. I should read this?
Give me the reason. Did we have a second? Second? Thank you.
Moved by Benny, seconded by Jane. Please go ahead and tell us about it.
Okay, so, we have, one of the claimants was not able to appear today and she would like us to delay this so we could see it a little later on, so we're going to move it and postpone it to the October second meeting.
And that is just for Elizabeth Rhodes?
Just for, yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Please call the roll on the amendment.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
Discussion on the main motion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next is item nineteen, the labor contract with LFR for a term effective August eleventh, two thousand sixteen through August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-one is approving the Huva Pharma Incorporated redevelopment agreement, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Item twenty-one is approving the Huva Pharma Incorporated redevelopment agreement, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Benny. Discussion. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Next then is item twenty-three, approving the seventeen eighteen city tax rate of point three one six four eight per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation, introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. Discussion. Thank you to Huva Pharma for investing in our community.
Yes.
Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. Public hearing ordinance's second reading are items twenty-four through thirty-five.
Are we missing something?
Yep.
Twenty-three?
We just did.
We just did, sorry.
Just did twenty-three.
Okay.
Okay.
Missed it.
That's okay.
Thinking ahead, sorry.
Next then is our public hearing ordinance's third reading. This is the change of zone one seven zero one-one. Did someone wish this was introduced by Raybold? So moved.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Carl. Discussion.
We'd like to move that we delay action on this item with continued public hearing until October sixteenth.
Second.
Moved by Carl, seconded by Jane. We have discussion on that?
Yeah. Well, I would support that motion. I know we had the request for two weeks, but in the memo that we received from staff, part of the reason for the four-week delay is to actually address some of the concerns that you brought up, to allow for additional time to work with the developer on an agreement that updates conditions of approval for Phase Two to try and address the drainage needs for that second phase. So, I think that's really important to get right and I'd support the four weeks.
Anything else? Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero. We have no items under ordinance's third reading. Resolutions first reading are items thirty-seven and thirty-eight. Ordinance's first reading, just item thirty-nine. Our pending list are items forty-one through forty-three.
John's not here, so somebody better speak up.
I'd like to move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved by Jane, seconded by Larian. Please call the roll.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Eskridge.
Yes.
Motion carried, six to zero.
We adjourn.[1745.83]